Welcome to On the Issues. I'm Phoenix City Councilwoman Thelda Williams. On this episode, we're going to talk about transit and transportation in Phoenix and highlight the importance of renewing our current transportation tax. Renewal of the transportation tax will ensure the growth of public transportation and provide for future maintenance and improvement of our streets. My first guest is former U.S. Transportation Secretary Mary Peters, co-chair of the Citizens Committee on the Future of Phoenix Transportation. Welcome to the show.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Glad to be here.
We are so honored to have you being one of the co-chairs of this committee. And you're a longtime resident of Arizona and the Valley, so you know all about transportation and the needs. So explain why transportation and transit is so important in this valley.
You know, Councilwoman, what we've found is that economic improvement, jobs follow where there are good transportation systems. So Phoenix is a world-class city. We want it to be a world-class city. So having a transportation infrastructure network that supports the city so that you can attract the employers, attract the jobs to this area, that's why it is so important. It gives everyone freedom and opportunity, I like to say, when you have transit and transportation options.
I've noticed how many corporations ask, "How far does it go? Where do we plan to take it next? And are we going to continue to expand?" It is part of their plan.
It is, exactly. You know, the committee is right now taking a lot of public input. We really want to invite public input from the citizens so we know what they would like to see, the improvements that would make their life better, their trek to work better, as well as employers. So there's a website that we have, TalkTransportation.org, and we would just welcome folks to go onto that site and give us their comments, their input, everything that they'd like to see in the city. And as well, we're going out and reaching to major employers, to education centers like ASU West and other places like that, so that we can get lots and lots of input in terms of what the citizens and the employers in the area want.
I really imagine most people do not understand that when the tax was passed in 2000, it was a 20-year tax. We have time, but if we want to plan, continue, and to, as you all know, go for federal dollars as part of our match, there has to be a guarantee to them that we're going to not only be able to grow, but operate the system. And that's why it's important we're starting now, I believe. Have you had any sense of the response? Have you had enough public input to gauge whether people are excited about this?
Well, people are talking about it, and I think what you said, Councilwoman, is so important. People don't, I don't think it's registered with a lot of the public yet, or the employers as well, that in 2020, this goes away, this transportation tax goes away. And so the progress that we've made to date just comes to a screeching halt, if you will, absent having that tax extended for a period of time so you can continue the great progress that's been made, for example, on the light rail system, expanding buses into various areas of the Valley and the greater Phoenix area, just giving longer hours, Sunday service, all of those things are so important. And that would stop if the tax is not extended, or some other mechanism for funding that system comes into place. And I can't tell you what that other funding mechanism would be. And this is important that we've talked about with the committee as well. Part of the money that we've depended on for transportation here in the Phoenix area has been some state revenues that come in through the Highway User Revenue Fund Tax, but also federal revenues that come in, both in the highway and transit fundings. And I tell people, having spent almost eight years in Washington, "If you're expecting the federal government to bail you out, don't, because it's not likely to happen." And in fact, that came up last evening. Former Councilman Claude Maddox brought that up. He said, "We really cannot depend on state revenues or federal revenues to carry us forward. We have to take care of this ourselves."
I had the opportunity to be in Washington this spring and went to the Transportation Department, of course. Put it very aptly, because that's almost verbatim what they said, "Don't depend on us."
Yes.
"Our fund is almost exhausted. We're not sure what the renewal will be, what rate renewal will be, and so you need to be planning. We want to help you. Don't take us wrong, but our revenues are down too."
Absolutely. I mean, you look, several phenomena have taken place since 19, well, really since 2008. Certainly, that was the beginning of what we now know as the Great Recession. But we saw, for the first time ever, driving drop off. The number of vehicle miles traveled a year dropped off pretty substantially during the early part of that year. And that, of course, is what generates a lot of the funds at a federal level that go into highway and transportation use, and street transportation use as well. And even though we've come out of the recession now, that phenomenon has barely changed. I mean, you're just now seeing the needle move a little bit in terms of increasing vehicle miles traveled. And some of it is very interesting. You know, why is this? Well, people have other ways to stay in touch with each other. I have a 17-year-old grandson that just very recently got his driver's license. He wasn't standing in the door like I was the second I was old enough to get my license. He waited, and you know, why is that? Well, he and his friends can stay in touch with each other through social media and so many other ways to stay in touch today, so they're not out there driving the second they get the chance to do that. That's not a bad thing, that they wait a little bit. But we're also seeing people really gauging how much they drive in a much different way than they did in the past, but looking for options, looking for options that will still get them where they need to go, to work, to shop, to medical appointments. And that's why the transit system is just so very important.
I think it's amazing you just mentioned that, because I have a grandson who just started ASU downtown, and he's always been car crazy. He's one of, like I was, waiting in line, you know, the minute I turned right age. And he was astounded by the number of students down here that, one, don't drive, and, two, have no desire to drive.
Yes.
And that just blew him away. He just said, "I can't imagine that." And I said, "So what do they do?" And he says, "Well, they take the train," or, you know, whatever. And I said, "Yeah." You know, it's a whole new concept to him. But I've found more and more people, and adults too, moving downtown or inner-city, and really relying on that, so...
Yes. You know, my own stepmother was part of that phenomenon as well. She had lived in the Northwest Valley, kind of the same area that I grew up in, and where she and my father lived for years. But she ultimately sold that place and moved down right on Central Avenue as soon as she knew the light rail system was coming in, because Rose knew at some point that she wouldn't be able to drive anymore, but she didn't want to give up her mobility. So she moved downtown, and we're seeing much more of a resurgence of people coming downtown again for sports, for entertainment, for so many things, but just to live and work in downtown.
You know, also, I want to emphasize the importance that the construction of the light rail has on economic development.
Absolutely. You know, that phenomenon is called transit-oriented development. But I mean, you know, Councilwoman, how much development has occurred, for example, on the Central Avenue corridor? It's just amazing, the growth that has happened there.
It really is. Overnight, it's like, boom, new restaurants, new shops, new shopping, just a bit of everything. But it is, I believe, they said $7 billion worth of new economic value.
That's the figure that I'm aware of as well, $7 billion in additional economic investment in this area because of the transit system. And it is so true. That then benefits the economy. It's like, I call this positive reinforcing cycle. So now people are moving in downtown, they're living here, they're spending money here, they're working here. That then has businesses and other things that are responsive to those folks who move downtown and want to have those amenities, and this is a very positive reinforcing cycle.
I know there are a few comments being made about, "Well, in 2000, you said you would go to Metro Center and you would, this line would be there." And I hope people understand that the recession impacted that tax and the revenue did not come in as predicted. And so I am very proud of what we've been able to do with less dollars. I think we have been able to be very creative about it and work very closely with the neighborhoods and schools, the businesses, to ensure that they stay as healthy as possible and safe, but continue to build along the route. So as you know, I'm pushing to get the light rail across Dunlap, across into Metro, because I truly believe that will be the economic boom that will make that area a huge success again.
Absolutely. And we had an opportunity last evening to talk about some areas like that, like the Metro Center area that's undergoing a redevelopment now. So extending that transit line to that just gives it a great opportunity to expand that redevelopment, bring in new uses, bring in new opportunities for people to live and work and play there as well. But you mentioned, Councilwoman, that the transit issue that was passed in 2000 promised a number of things, and many of those have been delivered, but unfortunately, because of the Great Recession, not all. So one of the things that we're talking about within the committee is, we want to hear from the public, we want to hear from yourself also. Should our first order of business, should we be able to extend this tax into the future or increase the tax, should the first order of business be to make that issue hold, to go back and finish those things that we haven't been able to finish because of the recession, and then add on new opportunities after that? So that's a discussion we're having right now. Certainly, things have changed since 2000. You mentioned the growth along the Central Avenue corridor and other places. So are there different assumptions today than there were then? Or is it really important to the public who voted for this tax to go back and say, "Let's finish what we started, and then we're going to add on to the system? We want to get to Metro Center. We want to get out to ASU West and along the Camelback corridors and Thomas Road corridors as well. We'd like to extend that service to midnight, not just to 10:00 p.m. to midnight." So is that important? And I mentioned earlier, TalkTransportation.org would really like people to just weigh in, go on that website and weigh in and tell us what you think about that particular issue. Should we complete what was promised in 2000 first, and then go on and expand and increase the system in other ways? Very interesting discussion on that.
Are you going to have public meetings where people can come and participate, or are they welcome to come to your meetings now?
Both, actually. And certainly, people are welcome to come to our meetings, but we all have a very active public involvement plan. So going out into the community, neighborhood groups, business groups, village planning associations, major employers, as I mentioned. In fact, one of the things we talked about last evening was Phoenix Union High School District, and the fact that a number of the students there actually use the transit system to get back and forth, which I think is phenomenal. So going and visiting with them and other school districts in the area and finding out, "What do you think? What's important to you to do in terms of transit in the future?" But always, we need to just really emphasize that that is predicated on being able to extend or increase this tax. If the tax goes away in 2020, then we actually move backwards. So that's part of what I like to call educating, informing, and hearing from the public about what's important to them.
Hit the nail on the head, because, I mean, I'm worried that we'd even be able to continue to operate at the level we do now, the buses and the rail.
Absolutely. I mean, that is a very real fact, that absent that revenue that comes in, then you may not be able to do that. Because, you know, federal revenues, for example, federal transit dollars cannot be used for operation. They can only be used for capital improvement. So if you lose your money in one place or another, you're just really behind the line. And the other thing about federal revenues, and you mentioned this earlier as well, in order to attract those revenues, you have to have matching funds, 50% in many cases matching funds. And if you don't have that local source of funding, you can't even get those federal dollars that are out there right now.
You know, I think it's interesting, too, that we talk a lot about the reasons people support public transportation. And there was a recent poll that I saw, and I had to chuckle, because, you know, there was the ones that used it, the ones that took it to work, to school, downtown, to the games. But what tickled me was the ones that said, "You get the car off the road in front of me."
Yes.
So there's benefits for everyone.
Absolutely. There are benefits for everyone, and that always tickles me as well, when I hear someone say, "Well, they're not on my road anymore, because this is my road, and I don't want anyone else on there." And so, yeah, it does, it frees that up. But express buses that exist today, I mean, think how many passengers are on those buses versus those who would have been otherwise in their car. And we're very much a kind of a one-man, one-horse. Here, everybody wants their own car, wants to go where they want to go, when they want to go. Little carpooling, but not a lot. So when you look at an express bus full of passengers, you're taking, you know, 40, 50, 60 cars off the road by doing that. And they're having a more pleasant commute. They're able to work, to read, to talk to others on the way in, instead of this white-knuckle, you know, gripping the wheel in traffic every day.
I think people were very surprised, because we don't have a lot of bus service up in District One, but the rapid buses that we have, standing room only, often in the mornings, parking lots are absolutely filled, to capacity, and the band is there for more. I know even Anthem has called and said, "Can't you bring the buses up here?" And we'll say, "No, you got to come at least this far." So there's a lot of support, I think, that we don't hear from on a regular basis, but that use it, their families use it in many ways, so...
And there's, as you said, there's a suppressed demand there. There's a demand that if we had the opportunity for more frequent bus service, for more rapid buses, certainly extending the light rail line, the demand is there. And what's really been important is the ridership. I mean, you know, for many years, people would say, and having grown up out here, "Oh, we don't have the population densities. We can't support transit in this area. We just don't have the population densities that we have in New York or Washington, D.C." And the facts have proven them wrong. The facts are showing that people are out there, they're using the transit system, there's demand for more. And if we're able to extend the tax and expand the system, there certainly will be the riders out there that are going to fill those buses and light rail cars up.
So, well, I thank you very much for coming today and chairing this committee, and I'm anxious to hear your progress as you go along. And if there's any way I can assist, please let me know.
Thank you.
Love to have you come out and speak to some of our neighborhood groups, let them know what's going on, because the more people get engaged and understand, I think, the more support we're going to have, so...
I agree. And I'll just close with TalkTransportation.org. We want to get out to the community of these meetings, but let's get everyone we can to go online and give us their input.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Up next, we'll discuss some details about the future of Phoenix streets and transit infrastructure and the expected funding we'll need to keep Phoenix moving forward. Keep watching On the Issues.
What would you do if you saw a dog, a cat, or a horse that looked like this? Animal cruelty and neglect is a crime that needs to be reported.
I'm Councilwoman Thelda Williams, here with my rescued pets, Henry and Cheyenne.
And I'm Councilman Michael Nowakowski, asking for your help.
If you ever suspect animal cruelty, call Crime Stop, the Arizona Humane Society, or the Sheriff's Office.
Animal cruelty is a crime.
And together, we could stop it. Planning street improvements and finding revenue sources to fund them is a crucial job in Phoenix. With us to talk about the city's street improvement planning efforts is Phoenix Street Transportation Director Rita Valina. Welcome to the show, Rita.
Thank you for having me, Councilwoman.
As you know, because I'm chirping at you all the time, how bad our streets are becoming, how many miles of streets do we have?
Well, Councilwoman, we have close to 5,000 miles of a variety of different streets across the city of Phoenix. With that, we have also about 95,000 streetlights, enormous amount of bridges, close to about 600, 700 bridges out there. And so we have a tremendous amount of assets across the city of Phoenix.
So now that we are beginning to age, and our streets are showing their age, do we have a plan for repairs, or do we know how much we're going to have to spend in the future?
With that, we do, as a city, we continue to grow. We're close to, a little bit above 520 square miles. We still have other areas that potentially could grow into the city. We do have challenges with just the funding that we get. The funding levels have just decreased for the last 20 years significantly. And so we're challenged in moving forward and trying to fund and look at other funding opportunities to do those projects. In addition to that, there's been the American Disabilities Act that have also added some additional things that we have to look at when we're doing projects, when we're doing maintenance on our streets. So we're making sure that we're trying to look at all the people that are using their transportation roads to make that happen. And we've identified several programs. We've identified about $6 billion worth of needs.
$6 billion?
$6 billion worth of needs.
Oh, my goodness.
And the current funding levels that we get is about $2 billion for the next 20 years. So you can imagine that there's still a shortfall with regards to just getting to what we need to do right now.
How much does it cost to repave a mile?
Well, there's major streets, and there's the collectors and the residential streets. The majority of the streets that we have, about 3,500 miles' worth of, are the local streets. The local streets roughly are about $160,000 per mile. And keep in mind, that's a local street. Local streets in combination would be in a certain amount for that, for a neighborhood, for example. For a major street or collector street, you're looking at almost three times that amount. It's about $700,000 a mile.
A mile?
A mile.
Pretty expensive, isn't it?
Yes.
So where do we get the money?
Well, we get the money, and one of the main sources that we get is from the Highway User Revenue Funds, or we call it the Arizona Highway User Revenue Funds. And it's funding that we get through the gas tax, where individuals use gasoline on a daily basis, and they pump gas, and we get a portion of that through the state. The state gets, collects about 18, 19 cents. It's cut in half, and then that half is appropriated across the whole state based on population. So we get a percentage of that money, and roughly, it's about $100 million a year. And in the good old days, before the Great Recession, we were getting almost 25% to 30% more money. So if you can imagine, we're now getting less, but as well as costs are still going up because of inflation, because of materials, because of labor. So it's, our challenges to do these projects are diminishing because of the funding is getting less and less, as well as we're getting better cars. There are better efficiency cars out there. So people are using less gasoline. So that's our main focus of funding that we get, and that's a challenge that we have right now, and it's going to continue for the future if we don't change something.
$100 billion sounds like an awful lot of money. How do you prioritize? I mean, what streets have to be done immediately? I mean, how do you figure that out? And then could you kind of tell me how you rank them?
Yes. We have a, it's a performance measurement that we call, it's called the Pavement Condition Index. It's called the PCI. We call it PCI. It's a performance metric that we use across the city. We evaluate, we actually survey, we don't have people walking around, but we have actually a van that was procured through the city with council approval, that we basically drive around, take photos, take measurements of the rideability of the roads across the whole city. Within two to three years, we try to do that cycle. And with that, we look at the pavement condition. Right now, we have about 24%, 25% of our streets, all of the streets, about 25% are in fair or poor condition. And that number is kind of growing because of the funding that we have. And so, for the most part, about 75% are in good or better condition. And so we use that PCI rating to give us an indication of where the greatest need for maintenance is required.
You know, one of the reasons that I am really pushing the transportation renewal is, before, it was a transit tax. And we've had many discussions over street conditions in specific neighborhoods that really, I think, are in disrepair, and they're not the first priority. Every time I think I've seen the worst, I go to another one, and oops, it's even more so. But we have to come up with a mechanism, because as you said, the state money that we've relied on continues to diminish. Cars are just too efficient. People are going to electric, other options, and more and more are riding our transit system. But we need those streets. So what's your role in this committee, and how are you explaining to people why it would be important to include roads and not bridges, repairs, whatever it is we need, as a percentage of this new renewal of this tax?
We are looking at three main areas, at least from the Street Transportation Department. One focus area, one of the parameters that we're looking at is the possibility of how can we connect to the transit corridor. So any current transit corridors, bus, or future high-capacity transit, and how can we connect from a street transportation perspective? And so looking at those corridors where, if there's sidewalk, there's no sidewalk, there's pavement conditions that are not appropriate, or they need to be enhanced, streetlights that maybe we can change the existing streetlights to a better, modernized streetlight.
LED?
LED. So for the most part, a lot of our lights are high-pressure sodium. That's the sort of a yellowish type, but we do have a standard to change those. But again, funding is a critical function to that. And so we're looking at that as one of the primary focus areas. The second focus area that we're looking at is looking at all the other expanding areas, like your district, like other districts in the north, and also in the south area, where they potentially might not have transit right now, but maybe they might have transit in the future, and looking at that infrastructure needs and incorporating that as well as within the program somehow, or finding another funding mechanism and providing an opportunity for the committee to provide recommendations to the city council. And then the third item that we're looking at is, as you've seen in the recent past, we had a lot of floods in the city of Phoenix, all over the city, in the north side, the south side, Central City. And so the next component is, we don't have funding identified right now as a steady stream of funding for flood control systems. So that's another area that we are looking at to see if the committee can create some opportunities and recommendations with our expertise, to see if, how can we also have funding for those types of projects?
You know, it's always interesting to me when, and I want to be clear, public safety is, when you think of police and fire, absolutely, absolutely. But streets are public safety. I often think people forget that police and fire aren't going to get to your house if they don't have a street to go on, and how important it is that we make sure that the streets are good, intersections are good, and all that falls under your jurisdiction, I believe.
Yes. And it's interesting, because if you can imagine, all of the major utilities, all the public utilities, everything that's underground that support a city are on the public streets, as well as getting to and from your house, or your friend's house, or your family's house, and also the emergency side of things, where everybody uses the public transportation realm of street transportation. And looking at how we can enhance that, make it a better quality of life, one of the things that, as a professional in transportation, we're needing to change the conversation of, it's not about capacity, it's about creating a better capacity for equality of life, for safety, for economic development. Transportation, with regards to street transportation, it's more of an economic driver, not so much of a big engine, but it's a driver for economic development. And if you have a prosperous community that has a very robust and well-planned and implemented transportation network, the community is going to be a better community for the future.
Absolutely. That's great. You know, it's, Phoenix is very lucky. We have a nice grid system. It's easy to get around, and I think probably your department is the one that's taken most for granted. But I will tell you, your department has always been very creative, and I'm very proud of the job you do. You do a terrific job. And I know, didn't Phoenix come up with the rubberized asphalt?
Yes, in the late '70s, early '80s, actually, because of the challenges that we had with funding, with materials, because of the type of environment that we have here, and the climate weather that we have, a lot of the, some of our staff members back then were looking at ways to make things better, make things better for the community. And they found a way to use tires, recycle tires, and use those tires, incorporate them into the asphalt that you see now that we've been using. And we've been, we actually have patents, city patents, that created that rubberized asphalt in the late '70s and '80s. And now, across the southwest, for the most part, other communities, other state agencies use that design mix that we created over 30 years ago.
Yeah, it's important that we continue to talk about why we need to renew the tax, but I think it's just as important to make sure that your department is included in that, because it is our infrastructure that will not only help us maintain a great city, but to grow a great city. And what we want for our kids... And what we want for our kids, my grandkids, is for this city to thrive and to bring the jobs, to have the great schools realize in transportation. And all that falls right back to your department. And I think it's not only the safety part, but the environmental part. So I thank you very much for coming on and talking about our needs, and being part of the show, and being part of that committee. And I look forward to hearing you talk about what's going on in the future and staying involved. So thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Phoenix residents don't have to attend a meeting to share their vision for transportation in Phoenix. Go online to TalkTransportation.org and tell us your priorities for transit and transportation in the city of Phoenix, where you think the infrastructure should be in 20 to 30 years from now. That's all the time we have for this month on The Issues. If you have any questions or comments about this show, call my office, (602) 262-7444, or visit my website at phoenix.gov/districtone. We'll see you next time on The Issues.